Figure out how, the way that we can work through it. Except we're lucky, we're fortunate right now that the preventive measures have been working. So, if, that's one thing that I wanted to, okay, schools are not gonna be, they're gonna be out for the next several weeks. This is something, okay, the reason they're turning, or not bringing the children in is to protect them for their safety, to keep them from the exposure. That's where they need to be, and they need to be at home. It's reasons that I'm gonna ask that the commissioner say, for this period of time, 'cause I know some people do bring their children to work from time to time and have to, but the place for the children now, for their safety, would be at home.
So that means one of your parents is gonna have to stay home and watch them.
And that's another deal, we're gonna, that's the reason we're meeting here today to discuss how we're, we're gonna approach that. It's kinda like while ago, if somebody feels uncomfortable and doesn't really need to come to work, or they have a child at work, okay, use your sick leave and stay at home, that will not be clear, you know, nobody will think any different.
They don't have sick leave?
What's that?
They don't have sick leave?
Now, that's something we'll have to approach.
I, I can tell you that there is something in the senate that is gonna be voted on this week, and it's called the Emergency Medical Leave Act. And if that in fact does go through, for two weeks, we have to pay employees regardless. If they're, if they're not gonna be at work, we will have to pay them for up to two weeks. Anything extended beyond two weeks is 67% of their pay, up to 12 weeks.
If they pass it?
If they pass it, and we should know something by the end of the week. I think it's gonna pass it.
That's good, but the problem with that is, school's out now.
Right. We should know something by the end of the week, this week though, is what I understood.
Judge, we would like to, maybe, I haven't had a meeting with the girls, but we have time to have a meeting when State money. I would like to see more of the people, whatever they need from our office, so they're putting in everything they can just mail to us, because we can process and work on that in the office room. We could put something out that says in our, on our website, asking people to please do be on.
And not have the traffic into the courthouse.
Exactly, but we would still be.
Still conducting business.
Oh, yes, we would still be conducting business.
If we can get that message out.
We have Mr. Rips here, so, you know, that's something that we could try to get the paper to.
Yes, well, we could do more mail, you know, and they can deliver, 'cause we get a lot of overnights from a lot of the title companies.
Do you have any kind of depository on your board that it could go through if they just wanted to leave?
No, but we could probably figure out something, but we could ask the title companies if they all came and get a certain time and, you know, staggered their times and, you know, that type of thing, so then they could still conduct their business.
Do you have any idea how much foot traffic you have in the course of an average day? Have you all ever done counts of anything?
Seems like a lot, 'cause the city's the most.
Average.
There's always a lot, there's always a lot.
I'm the receptionist, Jim.
I was just curious.
Yeah, but it is a lot, it is a lot. That is our main thing.
The goal is to kick things as first.
Can I say something?
Who's that?
Hello?
Oh, hello. Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, well, well, yes, my office does have glass between the customers and the clerks. Um, the way that that building is set up, the, anytime the air is on, that air goes straight into the little holes on the counter. Um, what I would like to actually look at is closing my lobby, but leaving my drive-thru open. Um, I've been watching the cameras all day, and it's, it's just been, it's been slow there at the office, so I think most people are already staying away, um, but I would really like to consider closing the lobby and disutilizing the drive-thru.
Okay, and here's one thing, like, what I was talking about, like, uh, Bob Gillespie said at the meeting a while ago about the study that Washington State did about the droplets. The glass prevents the droplets, it's not an airborne disease. It, what they have taken from that is it's, somebody has to, actually, their body fluids has to get on the other person. But, uh, that's something, if you want to close the lobby, uh, still offer, there's something, if you deny somebody privilege, then you're gonna have to, if there's a, a penalty to it, are we gonna still enforce that penalty, or are we gonna waive the penalty?
All right, but we won't be denying the privilege anybody, because the, the drive-thru will be open. Um, the other option is, um, and I know I just sent you a text just earlier, um, can you clean read it? I, I mean, I know we have some, um, Lysol at the office, um, and we've been using it as much as we can, um, that goes behind the counter and outside in the lobby, but can our village and yard people help us with that?
Okay, uh, everybody is gonna have to pitch in. We can't have three people running all over the county trying to disinfect.
Oh.
And here's another thing also, uh, I don't know what kinda supplies we have, what kinda supplies anybody has, okay? If we, you know, virus hasn't hit Wilson County yet, if we reduce all of our resources, we get rid of all, if we don't have anything when it comes time to have to use it, you know, that's something, conserve our resources, something that we're, yes, we need to keep things clean, I, I definitely agree, but we have to think, you know, what are we gonna have in two weeks? If, if somebody does, you know, before this is all over with, somebody comes down, that's gonna start the time clock all over again.
Uh, Judge, if I may speak, several weeks ago, our office took a proactive thing and stuff, and we invested in this, in everything, and we ordered it from Staples, they delivered it, and we've been cleaning our office. That means door knobs, keyboards and everything, every single day, every single day.
Okay, we've been doing that for a year now, or more. I mean, we clean our office all the time, but there's only so many, so many cans of Lysol that we have in the office.
And that, and we don't know if there's gonna be any more at the stores. That's, that's another thing, the lines, HEB has limited their hours, and they're limited the number of people, this is just an example, they're limiting the number of people that are going in the store. And people are lined up outside of HEB trying to get in, and there's only so much on the counters. And when they get sold out, they're sold out, they have to wait till they can replenish. And this is not just a Florisville, Wilson County, Texas deal, this is nationwide. So, it's not, we're gonna get it from someplace else, everybody else is doing the same thing, and are going out to try to get all of these, uh, supplies to keep things sterile and keep things clean.
All right, well, wouldn't, wouldn't that make more sense from a county's standpoint then, for me to close my lobby, my lobby, and just work through the drive-thru, so that we don't have to utilize, um, the supplies and leave it to other offices who didn't have to have it? I mean, not all the other offices have the opportunity to do what I do with the drive-thru.
Okay, uh, and, and one of the, the question asked, what about all the employees?
My employees will be there at the office, um, this also give us the opportunity to take all the training courses, um, that we're required to do so before August.
That's, that's your.
What's her?
That's your words in that.
Okay, okay, I mean, you could, your, it's really your decision if you wanna close however much of your office down you wanna close down. Judge?
I'm not saying no, and I will not let my employees come in, I mean, I'm, that will be their decision, and if anyone has to stay home with their kids or, um, stuff like that, um.
Judge, can I make a suggestion?
But, you know, that will be there, we will utilize this time to do what we need to do in prepares for, um, the future.
Okay, I have a question?
I have a suggestion, that perhaps until the, the senate bill passes, that for the immediate need, if anyone feels like they have to stay at home, whether it be for childcare or for their own personal care, then they can't, um, not allow them to do that, they can do that, but they would have to use their available sick and/or vacation balance if they have it, if they don't have it, that's at their discretion, but then if the bill passes and they have to, then we can make that decision at that time.
I'm sure if the bill passes, probably gonna be retroactive, it's probably gonna be a backdoor. I don't know.
I don't know about retroactive.
It won't?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Then, that would be, it'd be a call to make for the, the department head, the official and the employee, okay, 'cause, and I was, I was thinking maybe it'd be retrodisced knock, and that's what they, I think, just a second, we got, Commissioner Wiley?
Well, I'm, I'm just gonna follow up on something that you said, I was actually trying to get your attention, but we talked about the other day, and maybe it's been made clear that, um, during this, if you have to stay home, that we're waiving the requirement for the doctors to see you after three days. And that's already been, I don't know, out, general, that is, that's out there. But I think that's fair, under these circumstances, you could use either our comp time, if you got comp time.
Because we're not, right, because we're not mandating that they stay home, it would be optional, so they could, if it's optional, then it's optional for them to use their, a lot of time.
And, and I think it would be a good policy to use comp time first, use comp time first, and whenever you use it. I get a little bit of comp time, not a lot, in my, use the comp time first, and then however we wanna do, vacation or sick time.
Well, that would be a, you know, look to the employee, which, yeah, I guess comp time would be, it would be an option, I guess it would be, that would be the employee's decision, where they would be sick leave or comp time.
No, I think it was comp time, yeah.
Okay, okay, and that, that's what they would be using, if they, if they have comp time?
If they have.
But if they are in fact sick, they, they need to utilize that sick time first, if they are sick.
Right, but if they choose to just take off because of precautions or because of lack of childcare, then they would use their comp time.
I, I have another question. If you have an individual who feels like they need to be home, either because they're ill or because they're choking or home and falls under that, but they don't have, they don't have comp time, they don't have vacation time, they don't have sick time, obviously we're not, I wouldn't give, I'm wondering if there's some way we can make note of this, so that if this bill does pass, that they can be reimbursed with that time.
And that's what I was talking about, Bill, I mean, back to the beginning of this.
But they would be leaving at their own discretion, they would not be coming to work at their own discretion, not at the discretion of the county.
Yeah, we're not making a plea.
If we decide to close the offices and not allow anyone to work, then the bill comes into effect and we have to pay the employees, is that correct, Ellen?
No.
No, it's, if, we have to give them two weeks, if that bill goes through, we have to give them two weeks.
Well, and, I, I guess.
Without them using any of their time.
Regardless if they're at work or not, is what you're saying? Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that if they're not, if we, yeah, and if we close and tell employees you cannot report to work, that's when that gets in. I mean, they're still available for them, but we have to pay them.
My, my question along with that is.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We, we said a while ago, I think, that if we have employees who have children that are home, and they're too young to be alone at home, or they're too old to be alone at home, whatever it is, um, and that they can use vacation or comp time. What if you have an employee who needs to do that, but for whatever reason they have to do vacation or comp time? I mean, you can let them go, but if the other folks are.
This bill, this bill says you pay.
If the bill passes, which I'm sure it will.
If the bill passes, then they have two weeks worth of time that they can use.
Anything after, anything after two weeks is 67% of their pay, up to 12 weeks.
All right, okay, and this is be at home, that's what, the kids, when they leave, are out of school, they're supposed to be at home. If our employees feel they're not safe at work and need to be at, they need to be at home. That's the, and the key to this, this is.
Now, the other question is, uh, if an employee is sick and they think that they have a something of flu or something, who do you send them to?
They're, they can get screened, they contact the hospital or their local provider, they will, if one time they were, say, contacted the health department, but in reach and aid is where we are, but they'll go through a screening process, they'll ask you where you've been, they'll ask you what have you been exposed to, and they'll, they'll determine whether you need to test or not.
You won't be allowed to go to the hospital, if you're.
They don't really want you there.
They will screen you at the hospital, they will screen you outside of the doors of the hospital. EMS dispatch will screen people.
But not with the testing kits, though?
No, no, screening has nothing to do with testing.
That determines.
Screening has nothing to do with.
How high is it, how long have you had these symptoms, what type of symptoms, other than
a fever that you have? And you'll explain that to them, we got doctors already not allowing people into their doctor's office. Whenever you show up there, you call, they come outside, screen you in your car, and then determine whether you need to go inside of it. Same thing will be with, with going, you know, the test and all, all the test doesn't prove whether you have it or don't have it, you're still sick, it doesn't make you well, you know, you're still sick.
So, the symptoms are similar to the flu and everything, all these other allergy respiratory?
Sure, sure.
The only difference is it's sharper than the grip, that's the main screening factor there.
And so, you know, if, if an employee is sick, they need to call their doctor and find out what they need to do. The doctor's office should tell them how they wanna handle it, the doctor wants to handle it.
It's possible you can go through the whole process, have it, get over it, and never know it. Uh, there was a question asked, Mr. Gillespie out there, if, has anybody in Wilson County been testing? He didn't give us a number, but he said, yes, they have, and zero number of cases. Now, hang on just a second.
When we were talking about the sick, like, if their child is sick, and the parent that they can take the sick leave, is that correct?
Yes.
If their child is sick, tell that.
Or if they're uncomfortable at being at work, and they think, oh, if I stay at work, I'm gonna get, you know.
But you said that, if I understood correctly, they would use their comp time.
They'll have to use it sometime.
But, but if their child is sick.
You'll have to use some of your time unless this house bill kicks in.
But, I mean, would you use your sick time if your child is sick?
Yes.
Okay, that's what, I mean, actually, I'm not that I have anybody.
That would be, that would be HR's.
Yes.
Call.
And the other question, uh, we're talking about people gathering, like, driver license, there's a whole bunch of people there all, all the time.
I think they've shut that down, haven't they? They haven't?
They haven't shut it down.
Okay, our call, it's our call.
Whose call is that?
The state.
Well, yeah, but, but, yeah, but it's still accounting facility.
Well, if we shut the building down, that's not.
Well, it's just like the, the sheriff's department, which we're not allowing people to go within.
Okay, there's not, 50 people can't get in, that's what there's the number that there is.
They changed it to 10.
They changed it to 10.
When did they change that?
After the number of habits.
Well, that wasn't any much, they changed it. We're like, you're right now.
Yes, we are, we are.
Yeah, they changed it.
We are.
And Judge, they all, he also said that they're now looking at July and August.
August, for it to be over.
Okay, and so, here's what, you got a plan for, okay, this is March, four months?
Mm-hmm.
Four to five months, so, if we take, you know, we've gotta take measures for preventive, yes, because right now, that's the stage we're in, is the preventive stage. Uh, just, just a second, Mr. Graham, you're the next person.
Maybe.
The next, this is the preventive stage, okay, it's gonna get really drawn out if we have to go for four months, and we're gonna be very, very short-staffed at times. And, you know, this is a big deal, the sheriff's office, you know, how many deputies can we do without? 'Cause if they're, they're out in the public, they're gonna get exposed to it. Yes, Mr. Graham?
Well, I, we're talking about Wilson County, um, because we've done such a great job in my office, and because we are indirectly associated with Frank DeHeda, I don't only take care of people in this county, I have had people contact me from Massachusetts to Arizona, or to Alaska, when their family members come to take care of the individual bedrooms that they're responsible for. But, Bear County is shutting down my counterparts, Guadalupe County is not allowed to see anybody outside their county, I just found that out today. Their office has been calling me because I am accredited to the VA, so it's like going into Bear County. As soon as the word gets that Bear County is shut down and my office is open, guess where they're coming, 'cause they're coming already. So, today I saw a family member from Bear County. The veteran is actually housed in Guadalupe County in hospice. I called my counterparts at Shirts, which is just five miles from where they live, they're in Guadalupe County, cannot be seen 'cause the family lives in Bear County. My counterparts, who trained me, are not open, they are shutting down today. So, I'm letting you know that I will answer everything as I used to do, over the phone and help people, 'cause that's what I do, but they will be coming here, and they're gonna come in mass, now, again.
Okay, what you can handle is the number that you can handle in whatever your work day.
No, that's not the point, Your Honor, the point is.
If you're down here with COVID.
Yeah. To limit, to limit the.
I understand what I'm, what I'm saying is, may I, may I continue? Now, I appreciate that Dawn has Plexiglas between her and her people. I had a veteran in my office last week that kept putting his fingers in his mouth, and I said, please don't do that, and he continued. Now, I have sanitized every OCD thing I can get my hands on, but I'm letting you know that I don't have sneeze sheets, we handle paperwork directly from those individuals coming in. So, you also have your human resources, who they come in her cubicle, and she's stuck right across the desk from me, it's not six feet, it's not even three feet, same thing for Valerie. So, I'm letting you know, we are going to gain people from outside our county, I do it anyway, but if they're coming in, they're bringing everything they've got from every place else, it's not Wilson County anymore.
No, it's the whole United States.
But they're coming to my office, and you're, you're, um.
They're coming to my office, too.
Yeah, I know, but you got, yeah, I know, Dawn, but you got plastic and I don't. So, anyway, no, I'm just saying, I'm letting you all know that, yes, and I, you know, I'm gonna do the best I can for everybody that comes in, but I'm letting you know that with that point, they're coming. I've got people already scheduled tomorrow and the rest of this week, off and on. Um, your county, uh, who are you, our county attorney and I have an appointment with a veteran tomorrow to assist him, and it's because I can get into the VA system. So, I'm looking for guidance, but I'm letting you know, it's not just Wilson County, they're gonna be a-coming, and the reason is.
Can anyone strike to the VA in San Antonio?
Negative, no, because that is my job as a Veterans Administration authorized, plain file person.
And Guadalupe County is an authorized.
No, they're closed, they shut down.
No, that's not my.
No, I'm talking, I talked with them today, they're not accredited, they call me because they don't have the.
You're the only accredited NVA source?
I'm, yeah, Bear County shuts down, I am, you don't have it.
If Bear County shuts down, then you need to shut down.
But it's, I'm, I'm asking, because they are shut down, and they're going to be.
Bear County is shut down?
Yes, they are shut down as of tonight.
Then we need to shut down.
Well, I'm just, I'm letting you know that because the word is out that we are good, and I'm not being arrogant, people, Your Honor, you've seen it for four years.
Not a matter of being good, HR is a matter of taking care of the county.
Well, I, I under.
Bear County's shutting down because of the possibility, what do you do second?
Well, and that's kinda where I'm going, I can answer stuff over the phone, you know, the emails and phone calls come to my, my, my personal cell phone, and I've always done that, up until this last time, because of my, I was out for three months, shoot, I didn't even know hardly who I was, and you don't respond to that, Your Honor, I'm just saying. The point is, is, you know, I wanted.
We've given you a recommendation for your solution.
For my what?
It's, Bear County, close it if you want to.
Okay, but I will still be available by phone, I'm letting you know that, now.
You would conduct business like every other office and just limit the exposure of people coming to your office? It's the same for Dawn, it's the same for our county clerk?
No, it isn't the same for Dawn Brenda, she's not within three feet of the individual coming in, I'm letting you know that they're.
You can handle a lot of stuff on the phone.
Yes.
And you can defer media until after this epidemic.
Absolutely, I can, yes.
And that's how you have.
Okay, and that's what I'm asking, guidance.
When they call for an appointment, put them off until.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to get clarification for that, not meaning to be arguing, but, yeah, I mean, you're looking at somebody, now, Eva's, uh, she's got a big desk, one person goes up, it's just Valerie and I, and they're coming in, and they're sitting right across from us, and that's okay, it's what we do.
Okay.
Just say when somebody can seize your people in your office, Brenda, it's the same thing, I can't hear you.
Handle it.
Just handle it by phone and reset appointments for after the.
Okay.
Here's, here's the deal, if somebody comes in your office, if you feel is sick, ask them to leave, use.
Once they're there, they're there, Your Honor.
Be sure you keep your sanitizers, if there's any left.
We got it.
Where you can wipe things down.
All you have, all you have to do, just put a sign outside, say, close.
Yeah, I saw yours, yeah, yeah.
To address another point, the virus is spread by whatever, by a sneeze, by droplets.
Yeah, once they're there, they're there.
That can be transferred to paper that they're handing to Eva's, or on the counter, anything else, so, having that window isn't gonna be 100% sure.
Right.
If they're passing stuff through the window, this could happen next time.
Some of the other offices, mobile offices have, have been, Judge.
If they can get off, I mean, if somebody's pretty hard and.
It can be, yeah, it can be spread, that's what they're, yeah, we're fortunate it hasn't been spread around here yet. Judge, it's been contained in Bear County, it's been contained.
Well, I'm just gonna say, the difference between it is that, the concern is, is that you're not just servicing the citizens of Wilson County. This is expanded to where you're serving citizens from other areas. Our first job, our first responsibility is to the citizens of Wilson County.
Yes.
If, if Eva suddenly, for whatever reason, was getting all these people from Bear County, then we've gotta look at that, but our first responsibility is to the citizens of Wilson County, we have all those folks coming down to see you, we don't know what they're bringing with them.
Well.
And so, so that makes sense, I mean, I think we close it down, I think the, the tax office, they do their drive-through window, um, they're servicing the citizens that we were elected to serve.
The same as Mr. Eva's office, I think she can just close it, and just, like she said, if they can do it by email or, or by dropping off a mail, if that can be done, I'm, I'm with you. You know, and, and they, they don't have to have that birth certificate tomorrow, they can wait two weeks, and we can get to see how the thing goes. That's what most everybody's doing.
What about permit?
They say, I'm all for it, the EMA's office, we don't, they don't have to have that subject permit tomorrow, they don't need that driveway permit tomorrow, or within the next week or two.
Library driveway, they really need any permit time to up there.
And that gives us more time, it gives everybody else more time to see where it's at at this point.
If we can do it, we can't take money over the phone, we can take applications.
Sure.
Money is the only thing we can't.
Just take the application.
See the chance of cash in our.
This is gonna be with us for a while, not only how long the while is, but this is not, this case, this month or next month. Everybody that has a department or an office, if you're the head of your office or your department, plan on what's gonna happen in three weeks if we have a case diagnosed in Wilson County. What are you gonna be able to do, how many, you know, are we, we're trying to cut back as much as we can now, but it's gonna have to be even more, are you gonna be able to work 50% of your employees? And this is not only just a county government thing, this is, it's everywhere, it's, it's restaurants, it's cafes, it's major stores, it's HEB and law markets, everything.
My question was the line frame, so, with the library, we're coming up on summer reading, we're June and July, we have 10,000 people through our door, and the.
I think we, we need to shut it down for two weeks or eight weeks, like a lot of places have done, 'cause I was kinda shut our library, so, see where it's at.
Are we gonna reconvene in like three weeks?
Sure.
Well, it depends on the status of this event here, so, I mean, we have to do this on a week-by-week basis to see where we're at and where we're going.
For right now?
Right now, do your curbside service.
For two weeks, close, close.
And what would that be, for them to get a book?
You'd have to call the library and tell them exactly what you want, please don't tell them, tell them you want five romance novels. Please don't tell them you want five romance novels. And I've been going to-
What about return of books?
There's a, there's a book drop slot in every-
In terms of contamination and so-
That's, I'm gonna find out how long the virus can stay.
24 hours.
24 hours? Then we have cards that we can- We can, we can segregate those and return one day. And then the next morning, we can shell. Like those items we've segregated or sent away. So there's things we can do with the staff while we're closed to the public. But the staff has already said they don't mind doing curbside service. If you print from your card, it's in the years.
If they call and want five romance novels, I can-
I have-
They can borrow mine, but I don't want to touch-
Yeah.
Okay.
If you need to know what's going on-
Okay. It's gonna be more or less up to the individual official like Eva's office. It's the most vulnerable. It has no glass, no nothing. Like I said, and really it's up to whoever's keeping it, containing it statewide, nationwide. Because they've done an excellent job to keep it from getting here. We haven't seen it yet, so we're done great.
If Eva closes her office, clear the pocket. Do we close the four apps?
No. How do you lift, how do you-
My office is still there.
Yeah, we have-
This is not, this is not a, a county kosher.
We have to figure out how we can conduct business without having direct contracts.
Yes.
The foot traffic, right.
Will you continue to have your point?
I have, as of right now, yes. I don't have arrangements until next month. That's gonna be after, you know, everybody's got this March the 30th date, like it's gonna end right there. Which I don't know, it's gonna be over now. Uh, it's gonna be over now. Talking July, August.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, but, but while ago, they were, you know, 30 minutes ago or an hour ago, they were talking March 30.
The schools are talking about you.
Uh, they, and all the schools are the ones that were talking March 30. I was listening to them.
The state's in.
And I, okay. And we exist, okay? Can y'all do without toilet paper for Egg Weeks?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
We have ours.
Here's the deal. Okay, each individual officer official, make your decision on how you wanna handle it. Because this, if it does stretch out till July or August, we've got to provide some kind of services. That's what we're here for. That's what they pay taxes and give us, that's okay. Well, we'll be here to provide them, the taxpayers, the services. And if we do that by minimizing our employees' exposure to it? And that's, yes. And they slow down the service of the service. Yeah, like, it's, you're fortunate, the treasurer's office can operate without contact with the public.
Well, we're gonna lock that front door.
And same thing with the auditor's office can. You can lock your doors, nobody can come in.
We have something to do when you go-
You lock the door, you're keeping people out, the public out.
But we just need to post- They don't have to have the public. We need to post something.
We have it on all of our, whatever that was, that we sent out, it's up all of the voters, the sheriff's office and, and our, and our windows.
But I, I think if it closes, it needs to be something close to about veterans assistance, some, something there that- and a phone number or something available.
Well, if you can lock that door between your office and that lobby. Lock it permanently. Yeah.
Is each individual department head or elected official gonna update it?
They're gonna have to update you.
It's print to go on Facebook.
And it's gotta be, uh, well, everybody is providing a service to the county. You need to let your constituents know, this is what my office is doing.
We will have a meeting for a second, okay? Then we will discuss it with the judges. Do all these things, we're gonna need a portable thing and see if the judges are in agreement with that. Then we will post something on our website. But not before that, because we have to have it on. Because people still get marriage licenses and people, and that's a big, good traffic hindrance.
Okay. Did you grab that something he had his hand up?
I just, I'm talking with Mike Yeager, who's the regional manager for what I do. And he just said that, I told him, I said, "If Bear County's closed, they're coming here." And he said, "Yes." And then he said, "And Trump just put out no more than 10 people at a time in one place." So we're 10 here and you're 10 over there, so you're not with us. So anyway, make them, yeah, I mean, it's getting, it's gonna get worse before it gets better. Trying to operate wisely, um, yes. If my office is open, my number one responsibility is Wilson County. But that includes Frank Tahada Home, which then I get everybody from across Texas coming in because it's a state home.
But we've already talked about closing your office.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I'm just- Am I closed? All right, you're closed. Okay.
You're closed.
This is just to inform y'all and optus for the word per Texas A&amp;M AgriLife extension. For this week, as of now, we are not to do any face-to-face programming, no 4H programs, no face-to-face meetings whatsoever. That is from Texas A&amp;M AgriLife. They'll reevaluate and let us know on Friday if we can start again next week or we need to cancel.
What about the show barn? That's my next question. I say we shut it.
What's happening?
I say we close it.
We've had several people call today to move big functions like weddings and all of that.
They've already been calling.
And they are looking at moving them to a different day.
So I will say that I, from, from the city's perspective on the event center, they, they are either issuing refunds or moving and moving events because, um, the, for other organizations that had dates already scheduled at the event center, they've called us, asking us to even move our dates further so that weddings can be accommodated in the summer. Um, so that's something we definitely need to decide on in terms of-
Right. Right now, the city has not canceled. They're, they're allowing the person. So to, if they wanna keep their event, which most of them are canceling, but they have a, they have a mandate, no, we're shutting it down.
That's really leaving it up to the public to decide.
They're leaving it up to the, to whoever's got it, made it.
So what is it?
As of while ago, when we were at the meeting, that's what Ms. Turner said. Or was it?
How does this, is her staff having to clean it? How does that leave?
Okay. So we go back to the show barn because I know of a wedding on April the 26th. She's already moved. I know, but she moved it out to June the 15th.
Or whenever, the kind of final date.
Was June 15th. But she, yeah, she just let me- And so, are you gonna let her use it for June the 15th?
Sure.
If it's open, then.
Okay. Yeah, all right.
There's no assuming that this barn is not-
She's been on the phone with our office all day. Okay, okay.
I mean, I know, I talked to Christina while ago. There's only two events that are, one event really that's happening in March. April was booked pretty solid. But there's only one big event apparently in March.
Is that this Saturday?
Okay, question on runoff or elections.
Has-
We haven't heard of it yet.
The Secretary of State said anything?
Not yet.
And he's gonna be-
He's gonna determine it.
The one that's determining that because it's, it's, the elections aren't just here. The elections are state, the runoffs are gonna be statewide.
Right.
There's probably very few counties that didn't have a runoff.
Right. So my question is, let's say, we don't know, well, we know where have you went for sure in the early, our thirties. But statewide, we don't know what the other offices will be. So I would like to discontinue early voting, just in one location, which will be here, instead of having the two that we did for the primary.
That sounds good.
But when did we decide?
We haven't. Okay. How many people are wanting to move? I mean, I, if they're canceling or having to cancel, give them a refund. Or if they want to move later in the year. And I don't wanna book somebody else.
Right. No, no, what we're doing is the open dates.
Okay. Then let them, let them move to an open date.
Yeah.
So are we not gonna allow any events for the rest of March and April?
Are there anything?
Yes.
There are. Yes, there was a thing that was booked.
Okay.
But the problem is there is not so much them out there as the liability and then keeping it clean.
And the seniors-
I don't wanna sanitize the whole-
Wheels on wheels.
Yeah. Oh, no, books and wheels have canceled. Yeah, they're only gonna do pickups or something.
Kid Larry sent me a, uh, a email, but he didn't cover it. And I was gonna have to call him, he said he covered that. So he's-
People used to play dominoes there and now the library plays dominoes, so.
So, yeah.
Now they're not gonna have the library to do it.
Yeah, they can't have it. We have to postpone it until President lifts that. Was that a directive? Yes, yeah. And then, we gotta keep- Yeah. I know, Rumi was gonna have the-
On Saturday.
And the Republican-
Exactly, but they're having a phone call meeting on that tonight. Nikki sent out an email that they're gonna have a phone meeting at 8:00 PM tonight to see what they're gonna do with the district and the whatever, hmm, if those caucuses or whatever they're having.
The Wilson County Republican Convention.
Right. Okay, because the convention's probably gonna even have to be moved because it's in May 14th and 15th, something like that. So, yeah. So, I got that email today. So I don't know if they'll have that Saturday or not.
So we're canceling for two months, events in March?
Also three weeks.
At least two. Let's just let it go through March. And see what happens. That's only two weeks. That's, that's a waiting period for the virus. It is?
Well, especially if a large event's scheduled, they have any time to find something else. Or, you know, let everybody know and it's, like, first week of anything is canceled.
Do we have large events scheduled for April?
Yes, solid.
Solid.
Booked solid for April.
On one hand, amen for that, as far as, as that goes. But on the other hand, there could be a problem.
I know the 4H gala is looking to move their date.
They did already confirm that they-
They did already move it, okay. I know they were looking at it.
Well, it would seem to me that probably the scheduling person should probably be calling those folks and saying, "Are you, are you opposed to taking another date? You know, we're concerned about, about this virus." Cancel for March. But start calling those folks and saying, you know, "We would really like for you to take another date if you can at all." Because, you know, for one, we may not be as general the size, uh, it, there may be some statement about what the maximum number of people are, something like that. And then suddenly-
It's like you said, it's a lot. It's 10.
And 50 up till then.
Yeah. And so I, I would think that we'd need to take a proactive approach and call those folks and say, "Hey, there's some question about we, we, whether you're even gonna be able to have this meeting. We'd like for you to, you know, we've got dates and you can have your choice of the best one of those."
And if they say no, they don't want to, then we have to do, we don't, we have to let them?
Well, you could advise them, hey, pursue this directive.
I said we shut them down to, we don't give a choice.
We put it on the, on the government saying, "We were informed not to allow groups of more than 10 together." So a lot of that will give you the opportunity without losing any money to move to date another day. I'm not sure they understand that.
If not, they just get their money back if they choose to.
Right.
Right. Please sign this.
Yep, I think that's the thing to do.
Did the President?
Through, through March, especially in March.
Sheriff's got something.
Like at the jail, Liz is shaking her head too. We may have several of the officers who are gonna work back in the jail. Need to take off.
Yeah.
So to get people to work, we might have to pay them overtime. And that's-
We can't run a, we can't run a gentleman's or officer that he set all the signs on each.
But, you know, they're offering to all, all, uh, emergency personnel, fire police and the MLS, the free test in San Antonio of the drug test. Yeah. And that's free to all law enforcement.
And even if they tell you, like, even if they want to take, pay, take care of them.
Oh, I see what the sheriff is saying. If we're, if we're implementing, if they choose to stay home and the officer, the jailers choose to stay home, what, what does the jail do?
Well, this is gonna put a burden on us no matter what. And that's gonna be a burden.
At the lottery, that's the first, to the first Thursday in, uh, April.
Right.
That's a very, very big function.
They can't have it.
So we're gonna cancel the lottery, okay?
Okay. We have not, this is just one commissioner saying it. We got to vote on it or?
I will, I make the motion, go ahead and tell it now.
How long?
No.
Tell us. I mean, I'll tell it.
What was it?
It was when the show barn say end of April.
So the end of April?
Yeah.
All second. Okay, motion by Commissioner Gomez, second by Commissioner Falm. No events at the show barn until the end of April, after the end of April. Till, till May. Okay. Any more discussion on that? All in favor? Aye. Okay, so that was official.
And the other one, we can stay step by step until when Monday comes up for Commissioning Court. Things really start getting worse. We can see what's happening during the week.
Yeah, start planning.
Start planning the budget.
Okay, what, how it will get worse is we can get a case diagnosed in Wilson County.
Yeah. And then it'll get worse.
And it's one of these people. I mean, if it's one of these people, we're really-
Well, issue may have a lot of more residents in Wilson County commute from San Antonio to Florida. So, I mean, we, we have that opportunity to contract it. I mean, it's a chance to go further without. Well, right now, right now, the three cases that are in Bear, County, San Antonio, whatever you wanna call it, are travel related. They're not community. They weren't caught out in, they were, they were, came from Spain or whatever. So we're still, like I said, the preventative is working.
Are we gonna need a motion for the change in the VA office? The change in the tax office?
Okay.
And, and in the-
Unless, unless it is gonna cause the- They're have the option, you know, if the employees go home, they're taking sick leave or comp time or whatever. So that's up to the, that individual official.
No, but what I'm talking about is the VA office, it's no longer gonna be open to the public.
It'll be operated by telephone.
It'll be operated by a telephone.
It, it, it'll still be, be a telephone, but it won't be open to the public. The, the tax office is gonna be open.
Is Doug's called.
So, the county clerk's office is Eva's called.
So, can we set, can we set a, a date, a deadline to give the.
The library is our call.
And then Jalen composes one official statement on the county's website. So that way.
Say that again, Judge.
What I was suggesting was that all department, all elected officials provide their statement to Jalen, and then Jalen formulates one official statement to be posted that says below where the county offices operating, whatever, hours or whatever. And, okay, so it'll say county clerk, this is what she's doing, tax office, this is what, that way it comes from one source, and it's the official statement. And put it on the website.
Okay, and for, uh, the library, we, if we want to do that, we do it through Mr. Scort and the VA's office. Paul, Paul's under commission, how about the EMA's office? Uh, Commissioner. Nope. So, if anybody wants to, you wanna do yours all curbside?
Yes.
I can motion to. We had a motion by Commissioner Gomez for curbside service for library until.
My question is, we are open, like, on Saturdays, do you want to serve?
If you're gonna do curbside, curbside, there's no.
No opening, no.
No, no, do you still want curbside to go through Saturdays?
You wanna close Saturdays?
Standard library hours, except for curbside service. It's like Thursday nights were open till eight.
I say no.
Saturdays were open, uh, nine to one.
Is that gonna provide a hardship on your people as far as hours?
No, 'cause we still have stuff we can do, uh, eight to five, Monday through Friday.
Yeah. All right, yeah.
Okay, well, then Monday through Friday, curbside service.
Okay, library, Monday through Friday, curbside service, only motion by Commissioner, uh, Gomez, second by Commissioner Wiley. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, the VA office. Can you just leave your doors shut and do everything, via telephone, email?
Yeah.
All of that? Okay, and, to where you, if you get to where you can't handle it there, just shut down. So, and leave that, okay, we need a motion to.
Okay.
Close the doors.
VA motion to close the VA office here to.
Traffic.
To traffic. May, may I make a point? I am not the VA office.
Excuse me, he's a veteran's service office.
Yes, there's a big, very big difference.
Yes, we'd like to get my mistake out.
No, this is very important. The VA has a reputation of really not helping the veteran. I have worked hard for the last four years to make sure there is a distinction that I am not the VA. On the state of Texas, through, now, listen to me, this is important.
Veteran's Service Office.
Veteran's Service Office.
This is the Wilson County Veteran's Service Office. It's not the VA. The veterans will not go to the VA, that's really important.
Got you.
Now.
I make a motion that we close the Wilson County VA Service Office to, Veteran's Service Office to the public through.
End of April, first May?
Until further notice, because what if, why, why you're saying until further notice? Because it might be in two weeks, and it might be in tomorrow.
That's good.
Thank you for bringing that up.
All right, thank you. All right, motion by Commissioner Wiley. Second by Commissioner. You got that down, Mike? Okay, is there any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, what else do we have? Each, remember, each individual office gets your protocol, what you can do, get it to Jalen.
By when do you want it?
We're meeting Wednesday morning. Wednesday morning.
We gotta a public note.
Because first, we have to iron out everything, we can't just close that.
No visitations?
No. When's the, the deadline for the paper?
Today.
Today. But we still have the website, we can put that up anytime.
We can have it in next week.
But you can post the library closing today, right?
Yes, well, yeah, as she said.
For her and the veteran's service office.
Absolutely. What about the EMA's office?
It's open.
Well, the EMA's office, yeah.
I know.
What about permitting? Does that fall under that too?
Yep, close enough. Well, permitting, I guess, hold on to Commissioner's board.
Permitting is the personal.
Yeah, that's a part that I'm, okay. Is there any safe way that you can handle that?
No. Not, not taking paper and, I mean, there, it's accounted, it's big.
I say, I'm making a motion, Judge, that we close the permitting office at the EMA's office.
Before we do that, now, if somebody comes in, or somebody has a, or gonna build a house, has a deadline, got a loan, something like that, and we're gonna deny them any kind of permit? Or they can't get their construction done?
Well, since this virus has a 24-hour shelf life, correct?
Correct.
What if you just had a basket on that counter, the people come in, drop their permit off, and y'all just leave that alone?
Can, can they, can they just tell them?
I gotta get with Lynn, because she has a policy of not accepting applications unless they got the money. So, if they send in the check with it, then yes, that, you know, if they send mail in a check and, I bet.
I know we done, I know we done temporary warline, you know?
Correct.
I know that, I mean, if they came by later and paid a check or they packed the check over.
I mean, there's, there's more than six feet from that counter to.
To the desk, yeah.
Okay, okay, what we're doing now, you're leaving everything in the basket.
For now, let's wait till Monday before we do anything with it.
Permit, yeah. Yeah. I just, I, I, I still make a motion, would you close?
Well, if you're giving them a receipt, you're not, they're not touching it first, you are.
Well, I know.
So, you're giving it to them, you're backing away.
Most of these people know, Judge, the bank's gonna, when they're gonna close, they can work with that bank if it's gonna be till the end of April, or whenever it is. Uh, maybe circumstances.
The bank's closing?
No, 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 what I'm saying is, if the bank is gonna, if you're worried about the bank, they'll.
No, I'm not worried about the banks, I'm worried about what's happening right here.
Okay, I say we close, till the end of April.
I say we wait till Monday and discuss it then. But, there's a motion, he made a motion.
I, I don't know how the hardship goes, Jeff.
Well, the, the concern I have is somebody comes in for a 70-minute, and we don't let them do it, and they just put it in, and that's it. That's happened before.
We have that occasion right now.
Well, they can call, and everyone can take my case, basically, it's that way. I, I, I really think, there is a lot of traffic in that office, you'd be surprised how many people go in there. And that's the question.
We've got a motion.
Come into our office. You see them line up.
Yes.
All the time, all day. Never a quiet time.
And a lot of those people aren't just from Wilson County.
Okay.
They just waited till states come, they wanted to.
If you don't have ten people in there at one time.
No, you don't have ten in there.
That's, that's, that was.
We got a motion, and we have, no second? Okay.
They die for lack of second?
Okay. Okay, we've cut her, covered everybody, each individual?
J P.
Anybody have anything else they'd like to bring up, any commissioners?
Something that does need to be said is if we do in fact have an employee that is concerned over coronavirus or does in fact test positive, it is imperative that everybody knows that is a highly confidential situation. Um, those names cannot be released because of HIPAA violations, um.
At the same time, the, the government's gonna be asking him, who are, who all have been in contact, where they've been in the.
And so, my office, yeah, my office or Tom's office needs to be notified of this individual so that it can be handled the correct way, but again, those names cannot be released to the public.
And so, if, if there is an employee that thinks that they may have it, or want to be tested, they go to hospital to get screened, is that correct? What I heard y'all say, what else?
Well, a doctor has to, they go to your healthcare provider, and they do the screen, and, and they recommend the best.
They can go to their provider or their hospital, but the hospital's not gonna let them come inside.
No, I didn't say that.
And their, their personal provider may not let them come inside either. But that's where they need to go.
Urgent care, thanks.
The healthcare official has to do the assessment and order the, the.
They'll thank you, but they turn around and sit.
Well, they don't touch you, they.
Well, their healthcare professional should be able to ask them a series of questions that would help profile whether they have it or don't have it.
Right.
And if they meet the, that standard, or up to it, then I would think they would say, yes, you need to go get tested.
Yeah, there's, did you get that from the Texas Department of Health, that questionnaire? It, it's, it's a standard questionnaire, they ask everybody to do the assessment, if they need to go to the doctor or get tested. So, there's already a guideline for that.
Yeah, it's all, it's on the website. The Department of State Health Services is not a secret, passworded website, neither is CDC. Y'all can get all the information you need directly off there. You know, the department heads, the employees, everybody.
Yeah, I get emails from them.
Okay, comments, questions, or concerns from the individual offices here? Questions?
We, we received something from our court. I think that was. And they recommended that we be, um, not conduct, you know, like, convictions or anything until further. It was after, was it April, it was April, yeah, sometime in April. You know, I have court where I can't contact defendants all day Wednesday, but after that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna push mine into April. Like, our free trials, I'm gonna, I have contact with county attorney's office, but we're gonna, um, just.
So, they're saying the convictions, they've got time sensitive?
Right, they said that it's not essential.
It's not essential.
Is it anything that's not essential, meaning that it's not.
How do they know it's not essential? Somebody, he's losing revenue.
Except for repair and ready.
Right. And that's the only thing that's listed.
Cause I got the same email, 'cause I've heard of it, and it says, this means eviction deadlines can and should be extended until the governor lets the state of emergency. Filings may be made, but courts should delay issuing service so that we are not putting our constables in contact with infected people.
And I think that, that would be all individual calls for your offices, wouldn't that do it?
Yeah.
Judge, I got one more question. Since HR falls under us, do we need to vote on, uh, allowing people to stay home and use their sick leave? Or vacation time, or is just the fact that we talked about it exactly enough?
That could be left up to the department head. As long as they, if they, you know, once, they realize that they don't have the time, then if they're staying home, they won't get paid. They've got the time.
Until we're about to.
Because everybody's gonna have to have people to run their office, no matter what, you know. We, we still got services we have to supply the public.
Until we hear from the government.
Until we hear from something else. Everybody got anything else? At 4:39, we're adjourned.